Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of April 14, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Yeah.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes, and first staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt and connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I'll prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. Thank you. I don't see any hands raised at this time for public comment here.
Thank you. So we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from March 24. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a regular agenda, staff will introduce the one item we have today.
So we have item number one, owner Turway Brad Brady, Jordan Oliphant, and Lockwood. Applicant Danny Turway, file number PLN 202000369, and the location is 491, 499, 507, and 515 El Granada Boulevard, District 3. Camille?
Okay, sorry, I had to find the button. Good morning, everyone. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Alrighty. And so the proposal includes the removal of 31 significant eucalyptus trees in El Granada off of El Granada Boulevard on the north side. The trees are located on four residential properties, which are two are shown here. There's nine trees at 491 El Granada Boulevard, nine trees also on 499 El Granada Boulevard, and these are all side by side. They're all together in one, in one four parcel area. There are nine trees being removed at 507 El Granada Boulevard and four trees proposed removal at 515 El Granada Boulevard. The operation, the proposed operation involves the use of an existing fire road, which is shown in the picture on the right, that runs at the rear of the four parcels in question, which are here. The fire road does extend further east, but those parcels are not involved. And there will be a vacant parcel at the end of the fire road that will be used for staging and chipping the trees. Oh, I should mention that the chips will remain onsite to be used as mulch. So in terms of the permits required, a CDP is required as the tree removal does constitute development. And it is not, it does not meet the coastal permit exemptions, so it does require a CDP. The removal includes 31 trees ranging in 12 inches to 40 inches in diameter. Also, no significant tree removal permit is required as the significant tree ordinance exempts tree cutting to remove hazard to life as determined by the director, the Director of Public Works, or the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, which is CAL FIRE, and the project is supported by CAL FIRE. There'll be more details later in this presentation. In terms of the project's compliance with the general plan, Policy 1.24 requires that the project minimize the removal of vegetative resources, protect vegetation as that serves as erosion control and stabilizes slopes, and also calls for the protection of historic and scenic trees. As discussed in the staff report, these trees are not historic or scenic. They're actually, there's a large eucalyptus forest at the back of, in this area of El Granada, and it largely won't change the view from El Granada Boulevard because there are so many trees behind there. The eucalyptus trees are a hazard due to their extreme flammability and also close proximity to this residential neighborhood, as well as particularly these homes. There will be use of an existing fire road, which is a stabilized area, which will limit disturbance to other non-disturbed areas. And also, staff has added conditions of approval to require erosion control measures, including the use of chips as mulch, also to require the removal of tree debris that is, will not be used as mulch. There's a condition, sorry, there's a requirement of using the vacant property that the applicants clean up all the debris and repair any damage to the fire road. Sorry, to the vacant parcel, excuse me, and also for tree protection within 20 feet of the trees to be removed. If there, should a tree, should another tree that's remaining be located within 20 feet of a tree to be removed, that tree shall be protected. In terms of compliance with the local coastal program, the Policy 8.9 specifically calls, identifies trees greater than 55 inches in circumference, which is 7.5 inches in diameter. It protects those trees except for a reason of danger to life or property. So as for, as discussed previously, the trees are very close to the homes within 100 feet and are very flammable. There's 22 trees, meaning this size threshold of the 31 trees, and the trees will be replaced with trees that are adapted to the coastal climate and more appropriate in fire conditions, they're fire-safe trees, as recommended by the county arborist. In terms of sensitive habitat, the applicant, along with the four, with the other three property owners, is working with the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District, RCD, in terms of using their biologist to guide the tree removal operation in terms of providing best management practices to limit impacts to San Francisco dusky-footed wood rat, migratory birds, roosting bats, and monarch butterflies. And those best management practices is included in Attachment D of the staff report. Staff wanted to note that we received a comment from Jill Grant, who's a biologist, and that correspondence should have been forwarded to the planning commissioners, which indicated that the visual survey required in the original Appendix D was probably not necessary and perhaps too expensive, just cost unnecessary. So Appendix D has been revised without the visual survey, the pre-construction visual survey for the roosting bats, as the trees would not provide adequate habitat for roosting bats anyways. So that has been revised. The biologist will monitor the tree operation and the implementation of best management practices during the tree removal operation before and during. And RCD will evaluate the effectiveness of BNP's and it will adjust them as needed for other projects that it takes on. So in terms of the different species and the best management practices that would apply, the dusky-footed wood rat would be protected through pre-construction survey. Same with the nesting raptors and birds protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act with discouragement of operations during the nesting season. And also for monarch butterflies, their overwintering season is when the, when the climate is 55 degrees Fahrenheit or below. So within that area, additional requirements would kick in. And as I discussed with roosting bats, the eucalyptus trees do not provide adequate habitat, but work should occur outside of the maternity roosting season, and there are measures to limit impact. It should work be done within the maternity roosting season. With regard to special status plant species, eucalyptus-dominated habitat does not provide suitable habitat. So those, there's no risk of impact to special status plant species. A very low risk. As I mentioned before, there are, there's erosion control requirements and tree protection requirements for trees within, that would be protected within 20 feet of the trees to be removed. There's a pre-site, pre-work site inspection where staff will visually inspect for proper erosion control prior to the start of the work. In terms of tree replacement, there, there were many trees proposed for replacement on each of the properties, but staff, based on CAL FIRE comments, has limited tree replacement to three trees, a 15-gallon each per each of the four properties. And the tree species are those selected by the county arborist for fire safety. Also, there's a condition for either stump removal or stump maintenance to control eucalyptus regrowth. So there's measures there to, to discourage regrowth of eucalyptus in the area of the tree removal. In terms of environmental review, the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines allows for an exemption for fuel management activities within 100 feet of structures to reduce the volume of flammable vegetation. And that's provided there won't be a takings of rare plant or animal species, which was discussed previously, that there will be erosion in control, erosion incentive control, as well as where the public agency, having fire protection responsibility, has determined that there's an extremely hazardous fire condition where the fuel clearance is needed within 100 feet of structures. And Rich Sampson at CAL FIRE has made that determination. So just in terms of the external review agencies consulted, the California Coastal Commission received a referral, but no comment was received by staff. And the Midcoast Community Council referral was sent and no, they responded with no comment. And also referrals were sent to Coastside Fire as well as CAL FIRE, but we did not receive a response from Coastside Fire Protection District. We did receive a response from Rich Sampson in an email. He does support the projects, along as there's appropriate erosion control measures taken. And he did have comments on the proposed replanting plan by the property owners, saying that it basically contains too many trees, that the area is historically coastal chaparral and didn't contain so many trees, wasn't as forested as it, as it is today. And that the tree species proposed may not be appropriate for the soil type, that there will be regrowth of native vegetation. So staff has responded by limiting the replacement or minimum, yeah, to just three trees per property. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in Attachment A of the staff report, and staff is available for questions.
Thanks for that presentation, Camille. With Chair Ketchum's permission, I'll just add a couple additional comments from SAS perspective.
Sure.
So based on our experience last year and years before with these massive fires, I don't need to say much to convince you of the importance of this type of project or for you to understand the immensity of the problem and the challenge of dealing with this issue. And so, you know, we're trying to tackle it on many fronts and working cooperatively with property owners is, I think, one of the key ways in which we can achieve some of these safety measures that are so crucial. So I wanted to thank the applicant and the team of property owners who's taken the initiative. Like to thank the Resource Conservation District for their assistance provided. And to Camille and the rest of the staff that's worked on this and other projects, because clearly part of the effort needs to be to streamline permitting requirements for these types of activities. And we're trying to do that on many fronts. One of them being this idea of doing one permit for multiple properties, and we refer to that as a master permit. So we're working cooperatively with property owners and RCD to try and increase the amount of land area we can deal with. The other thing that's going on is, of course, we're updating our tree regulations, and we'll be doing everything we can to try and streamline permitting processes for particularly removal of eucalyptus trees. And we're working with the Coastal Commission and Santa Cruz County on the possibility of having the Resource Conservation District obtain a public works plan from the Coastal Commission that would enable these projects to move forward under a public works plan that would eliminate the need for coastal development permits. Also, on the coastal development permit need front, I'm in conversation with Coastal Commission staff. As Camille pointed out, you know, it's based on this definition of development that includes the removal of significant vegetation. And I have discussed with the commission whether these types of stands of eucalyptus should really be considered significant vegetation, because I think many view it as more of a weed problem than a significant or important vegetation. So, but as you see from staff's analysis, we do run into legitimate issues that need to be addressed, from access to properties to making sure it's done in a safe and a clean manner. So, you know, we're really trying to strike the right balance of making sure that these operations are carried out in a proper manner, but also to minimize the difficulties of getting permits to do these things. So I'll stop there and be available for questions. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, thank you for that. And also, before we go to Commissioner questions, is the rep from RCD here, do you wish to make any additional remarks or just be available for questions from the commission at this time?
I do have additional questions on why, on the types of species chosen by the county arborist. It just, I'd like to see a little bit more preference for native species, but happy with what you guys decide. And otherwise, I'll be here to answer any public comments.
Okay, good. So to Commissioner questions, let's start off with Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair. You can hear me, right?
I'm Yes.
Not muted. Okay, thank you. I had, I think it's a very good report, and I'm so happy that this is being done proactively. One of my questions, just a general question, is only four of the homes have come forward, or four property owners have come forward to do this. Are the other properties also under the kind of having the same, are in the same situation in terms of eucalyptus trees?
Yes, Danny Turway is the applicant, and he coordinated with nearby property owners to see who is interested in participating in this particular permit proposal. So I'll let Danny talk about how he approached his numbers.
Am I allowed to speak without raising my hand at this point? Just, you will see it in the comments, but this was a proactive attempt first for my own property, then with local communication, just pulled in four contiguous properties. Many, many people have come forward on the Boulevard in the last couple of weeks since the report was published, saying that they would like to be included in an application like this.
Okay, so, so the others may come later on. I guess I'm just speculating more than anything else.
It's a fantasy, perhaps, on many people's minds, but I would like to see, and many people would like to see this process be applicable to an N-Bank application for all of El Granada Boulevard. And I would like to hear Rich Sampson or someone else from CAL FIRE offer their opinion on whether or not it is a logistical advantage to have a fire break 300 to 400 feet wide across the Boulevard on both sides. It's already there on much of the south side, south and east side.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's a good thing. Another question I have is that there are all these seasons in terms of the life or the birds or the monarch butterflies or other rats, things like that, they have their nesting season, breeding season. So, so do we have a timing which will work based upon all of them? Or different things would be done at different timings?
I could probably answer this question. Yes, so that's correct. There are different seasons, just depending on the different types of species in the project area. The biological assessment has recommended different methods or different best management practices depending on the season. So there is some flexibility based, built in in case you do need to work with, within one, you know, species season to ensure that we are still protecting them, even if they're within that season. So generally, if you're without, outside of that season, there's a lot less protection measures you need to do. And if you are within, there are a few more. So there is some flexibility built in. So if we do need to work in there, we're still protecting species.
I see, I see. So there are ways of doing it even during, during that season, which may not be safe for certain species, right? Okay. And so can either Camille or one of the others explain what is finally decided in terms of replacement trees? Because in one of the attachments, I see many five-gallon trees as the replacement. And then I believe Camille just said that every property owner will have to have only three 15-gallon trees. So could I ask to just explain which is the final version?
Right. If you read the conditions of approval, the conditions of approval state the three, three 15-gallon trees of the list per county arborist on each property. There were some concerns with the amount of trees being proposed by the property owners. So that has been limited to three fire-safe trees.
Okay, so, so it's not three, it's total three per property.
Property.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And my last question really is, what, what is the total duration of the project going to be?
Let Danny.
I've spoken with four different arborists, and we'll be getting a few different quotes, but it will range, if there is no biological assessment to preserve a portion of it, it would range between two weeks and four weeks, depending upon how large of a team we got out.
I see, I see. Okay, okay. That, that's pretty good. Okay, thank you, thank you. That's all the questions.
Commissioner Hanson.
So the trees recommended in Appendix B, we're not going to get.
That's right. It's just the, the ones listed in condition, in the conditions of approval.
Appendix B usually has trees we would see on the coast side, and ones recommended are trees that, for the most part, are not native to San Mateo County. Would the biodiversity be equivalent?
There were, these, these trees, and I do wish the arborists were here, but he, there was so much back and forth between him and I about the selection of these trees. They would have to be fire-safe trees. They would have to be adjusted to the, or appropriate for the soil type, as well as the climate. So the, there was a lot of consideration in the choosing of these trees.
The fruitless olive is a pretty familyable tree, more so than all the California natives that are listed. I'm kind of confused between the two lists, because for all the things I've ever read and seen, the list on Appendix B is more what I would expect it.
We can take out the, well, he, he looked at Appendix B, and he found a lot of the trees to be problematic, and we can take out fruitless olive if that's a concern for the commission.
Yeah, my only question through the whole report was about the selection of trees.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Ramirez, do you have questions?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I don't have any questions at the moment. The concerns I had were answered with Mrs. Gupta's question, so I'm good for now.
Okay, Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Okay, first of all, thank you very much, Camille, for taking my call and emails from last week and this week regarding this project. The presentation is awesome, and the drama between this meeting, outstanding conferences, and diameter was clearly explained. Thank you very much. I have one more last question that I want to ask you regarding the other ones that I asked you previously. It says that nine trees didn't meet the over 55 inches in circumference, so 17.5 in diameters. But why, if they didn't meet the criteria, they, they would need to be removed?
Camille, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. The LCP sets kind of aside the trees that are 55 inches in circumference or larger, which is the larger trees, 17 and a half diameter trees, as, as special trees that should be protected. But the county tree ordinance identifies a significant tree as being 12 inches in diameter or larger. So the trees proposed for removal range from 12 inches, nine being less than 20, the 17 and a half inches in diameter. This sort of smaller trees. So they include smaller trees and larger trees.
For, for context, Commissioner, this is just a question about what I had a perception of should be on the permit or not. The neighbors are all agreed, we're taking out all eucalyptus within the contiguous properties, all, all small trees and large trees combined, all eucalyptus, yeah.
But my question, but my question is, if we follow the guidelines or the concept of they need to be removed because they go over fifty-five inches in circumference. And these nine trees didn't meet that criteria. Wouldn't that be considered that they're not meeting the criteria to be removed or cut?
I'll try and answer that. So the, the criteria is what triggers a permit requirement. And the permit requirement doesn't relate to whether or not the tree should or shouldn't be removed. It just, once you reach a certain size, if you're going to remove it, you need to pull a permit. Right now, those property owners could cut down all the small trees that don't meet that size without a permit. So we're just trying to be clear about what the regulations require. I think when it comes to achieving the project objective of fire safety, the small trees must be removed too for the project to be effective. So that's why it's part of the proposal.
Okay, so they don't meet the criteria, but since they're doing the project, they're going to go ahead and remove the nine trees?
Exactly right.
Okay, that was my, that was my concern and that didn't initially thought that it was like a theory for all of them, but nine didn't meet the criteria. But anyway, since we're in the project, we're going to remove. Okay, that's my last question that I was going to ask Camille in conjunction with the one that I asked this week. Thank you very much, Camille.
Okay, I have a few questions. The, the streamline that's, that's happened with this process due to the fire danger, it all hinges on trees that are within a hundred feet of structure. And so my concern, and I appreciate the, the understanding of urgency of all this by the county and efforts to streamline the whole process. So the, as far as private property goes, undeveloped parcels and, and, and trees that are greater than a hundred feet on developed parcels and all that, how, how will that be approached? In order to streamline the process and motivate these, particularly the undeveloped lot owners to address the, the fire hazard and restore the habitat. Have there been any, have there been any ideas tossed around?
Yes, definitely. So the hundred foot criteria is one sequoia exemption. There are other sequel exemptions available as well. And I'm not an expert on them. Probably the folks from the RCD would be able to better explain it. But one of the options that I mentioned is the public works plan approach. And under that approach, there's another vegetation management of fuel clearance exemption available under SEQA. And if that approach is successful, it would eliminate the need for coastal development permit. We, Camille and I met yesterday and we were talking about a parallel amendment to county regulations that would also remove a requirement for a RM permit or a PAD permit, which is what you would run into Chair Ketchum when you're in the more rural, isolated areas up more than a hundred feet from structures. So we're looking at, you know, that approach as well as this master permit approach. If we can get even just one large property owner to take a comprehensive look at their property and do vegetation management program, we'll do everything we can to assist them and help streamline the permitting process. So that's been our approach today.
Well, specifically directly behind these properties we're looking at today is an area of paper streets and the eucalyptus forest. So those, you know, they seem to get developed one, one house at a time moving into that area because they have to extend the road and utilities, but there's a big chunk of forest there and it's zoned R1. So that, I guess that was my concern was what about the R1 parcels that are undeveloped? Whether they stand alone or whether they're in a large area like directly to the west of this project.
Yeah, I, I think that's a valid concern because I think what it takes is initiative by the owners of those properties to get a plan. I'm not, I mean, the regulations are the regulations and we'll work with them to accommodate the projects. It's getting the initiative of the property owners to actually undertake it. And it's not an inexpensive endeavor. So I think the only other, I, I mean, maybe that's the answer is how can we provide incentives to the property owners to initiate these programs? And I think the RCD's chipper program and looking at expanding that and, you know, expanding the scope of the area that can be covered by permits like these is probably the best we can do to make that happen.
I think these are one areas. It just seems to me, so this is something that I would urge you to work on as far as motivating. Because I would imagine that a property owner who just has this investment in vacant land, I mean, they don't want to invest any money in it. They don't know if they'll ever get around to building on it. And so that's a challenge. And so the people that have, that do live there, they're the ones in danger. And, and the undeveloped parcels, those people don't have anything to lose. In fact, if it burned down, it would save them the liability of getting rid of the trees. So that's just something in this whole group. Anyway, so to my questions in the category of invasive, other invasive species in this area. My concern is the follow-up control of these species beyond control of the eucalyptus tree sprouts to restore healthy habitat, that can we add conditions to this project to, for ongoing control of jibata grass and particularly, and also Cape Ivy, I would say. And this comes up because I noticed in the plant list that what's existing there, there's Cape Ivy. The Coleman Creek Headwaters Restoration Final Report Included Lessons Learned. And they mentioned spreading, important to spread the mulch evenly, four to six inches deep. Gets piled too high, it's just, it's a problem. It's expensive to move around after the chipper leaves. And also they recommended, and if they had it to do over again, they wouldn't treat the invasive species first before the tree cutting and chipping. And this is especially the concern I have with Cape Ivy, that they don't run it through the chipper because every segment of this perverse plant will sprout a new one and all in those chips. And what might be, seem like, you know, oh, we have some Cape Ivy here, might be, oh my God, we've got nothing but Cape Ivy. So I just wanted to bring that up as far as, I don't know if we can add any conditions to expand this to this project, but that's my concern. The other, about replacement trees, the, I mean, clearly the, as we went over in the tree ordinance update steering committee, that the El Granada Hills are, are overstocked with trees. And that reducing the canopy would, would be a good thing. The county arborist has suggested drafting a climate-ready tree replacement guideline. We don't have this yet. And in the urgent push to mitigate the eucalyptus fire hazard, do we want to end up with every parcel in El Granada required to plant from this list of four trees? We're not prepared with a list of replacement trees or even a plan for what the goal is for habitat restoration of El Granada Highlands. Deputy Chief Rich Sampson commented on this tree replacement that historic vegetation coverage on the hills of El Granada was coastal chaparral. He said, based on other eucalyptus removals in the same area, several months after the eucalyptus is removed, the native vegetation will start reestablishing on its own. And my comment is, if the other invasives are controlled, that planting all these trees might actually be counterproductive. That was his, and, and the thing is, so the Corey Park Master Plan, which has also, was also put on hold in 2018, had tantalizingly some recommendations on habitat management to preserve, enhance and expand the northern coastal scrub areas on the edges of the forest. So once again, that's this concept of what, what do we want to restore there? Are we going to? And this is a values discussion and all that would have been, you know, that would seem to be part of the master plan for Corey Park. But I mean, since this fire mitigation project is so urgent, I, I hope there's some way to have a relatively focused, brief conversation to come up with a plan for what kind of habitat we're going for, what do we want the result to be? So that maybe, you know, maybe we don't require any replacement trees until we have that. I, I mean, I'm not sure. But so those are my initial thoughts. And if there's any comments on just that, if they're not, okay.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. And, you know, I think those are very astute observations. And it's oftentimes, I think, difficult for staff to require and monitor these kind of long-term mitigation responsibilities, particularly when we're trying to encourage people to conduct, you know, vegetation removal for fire safety. So I think those are, the points you raised are all valuable objectives to have a comprehensive approach to restoration. But our ability to make property owners do that and enforce that over the long term is a challenging proposition. So I, I, I think that staff has put a lot of time into talking about and thinking about the options regarding vegetation replacement. But we're certainly open to the feedback of the commissioners and the applicants in terms of what they think work best and we can adjust the conditions accordingly. I would just caution against placing, you know, long-term restoration objectives as a requirement. I think those perhaps could be more encouraged guidelines. Because you're right, you know, this is still under development. And I think probably the greatest success we'll have will be in education and outreach as opposed through to, you know, trying to acquire this as a condition of permit approval. So that's just my thoughts on the comments that you raised. So I think at this point, unless the commissioners have additional questions, we could turn it over to public comment.
I had one question. May I?
Yes.
When I see the layout of that area just by clearing up four properties, is, is that going to provide adequate protection if, if none of the others are cleared up? I don't know how dense those are.
Probably not, but it's an important start. And I think it's ultimately, you know, the responsibility of the property owners to conduct similar activities to protect the community. So I think, you know, I'm really glad to see this project because I hope that it will encourage other property owners to follow suit because I think that's what it's going to take to really make a dent in the problem.
Right, yeah. This must be an expensive project, I'm assuming. Getting all this done for the applicants. So, yeah, they need to undertake that. Does county have any kind of, I know you talked about a lot of them, Steve, like incentives for the applicants? To, to do this? Yeah.
We're working on that as part of our update. And those incentives really rely on trying to minimize the paperwork and the difficulties. We, we can only do so much because we're operating under state laws that require us to do certain things. So, but I, I think the Resource Conservation District is probably leading the way in incentives. And I hope that we can continue to work with them and Cal Fire and county parks to expand some of these incentive programs. So there's more work to be done there for sure.
Any other questions? Any other questions from commissioners to staff? Okay, I will, we'll open public comment. I'll turn this over to this. Nuhan.
Thank you, Chair. So we're now opening public comment for this item. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone, please press star nine to raise or unraise your hand. I now see three hands raised and you'll have five minutes. One moment while I start the timer and I will, oh, actually, five, okay. I'll first call on Greg Diegus. Hold on just a second. So Greg, please accept this request. I mute your mic and you may begin speaking.
Hi, I'm an elected member of the Midcoast Community Council and I and a large number of my constituents support removal of all fees for eucalyptus removal and a streamlining of the permit process, which is overdue. In fact, a 2011 report by the RCD recommended removal of regulatory obstacles to eucalyptus control. In 2015, San Diego completed a twelve-year program of eucalyptus removal, which means San Mateo County is already eighteen years behind and counting in eucalyptus removal. And we need action and we needed it over a decade ago. This permit process is one of at least two major wildfire safety concerns the planning commission can immediately contribute to addressing. Another matter will be before you shortly. I request the county remove all permit fees for eucalyptus and fund the department directly for that activity. After all, that still leaves residents with a large bill for removal and replanting. If the planning staff needs more resources, then I support an increase in funding by the county. After all, prevention of wildfires should be a major component of any homelessness prevention program and should qualify for Measure K funding. Here are some questions for the staff. Can removal of all permit fees be accomplished administratively or by an emergency ordinance? How long will it take to finish up and adopt this new tree ordinance to get started now? Why is replanting a requirement if fire danger is a concern? And I note, as several of you have, the comment by Cal Fire Sampson about the regrowth being organic. How can we remove the coastal development permit requirement of the coastal commission? What does it take to remove that? Why is changing the view a concern when the view is of deadly, flammable invasive species which are a risk-to-life property and, by the way, county taxes? Why are species a gating concern? Those trees are not native habitats. They're habitat of opportunity. And I further note that if species protection is an issue, those species will all be killed by the wildfire, as was proven in the Oakland Hills and Paradise fires. The focus should be on removing those trees as soon as possible. And finally, how is a new streamlined eucalyptus process to be publicized to speed wildfire prevention by residents and others? Can a bounty for eucalyptus removal be funded by the county? I'll be glad to support any of those funding matters with the supervisors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I will next call on, hold on just a moment. The next person I will call is Carlisle Ang Young. Ms. Young, please accept my invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking. Ms. Young? She's unmuted. Ms. Young?
There it is. Thank you. I didn't see the unmute till just now. I just appreciate that you're finally addressing this issue because I was on the SAMCAR committee with a bunch of other realtors to try to get the county to update their tree ordinance way back in 2012. And then in 2016, they started on it. And it's apparently an update, but it's never been completed according to the county website. I don't, I would like an answer as to why it was never finalized. Seemed like they were really working more on the heritage tree protection in the neighborhoods down. in the neighborhoods down near, closer to the El Camino Real, but they didn't really touch much on our coast side issues, which I think obviously eucalyptus, there's such a big problem, especially for fire. And that really worries me. So I've asked it a few times to the Board of Supervisors to create an incentive for property owners to get rid of their eucalyptus trees on their properties. And first of all, to start by waiving the permit fee, but also maybe offer, like Greg mentioned, a bounty or some kind of incentive per tree to get rid of them, get them out of there. Because like the fires down in the South Coast, if you lose the houses, you're going to lose your property tax base. And it's going to be a lot cheaper to give an incentive to remove some trees than to lose all the property taxes because of the fact that the homes have been destroyed. And I also just wanted to reiterate that Cape Ivey is so invasive that I hundred percent agree with Lisa, that it should be removed and not shipped. So I would really be in favor of finding out, first of all, if Steve Monowitz could mention this, why the tree ordinance has never been updated since 2016 and especially not to address any eucalyptus removal on the coast side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I will next call on Kathy Kooza. Kathy, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for your time. I live at 466 El Granada Boulevard. And I'm here primarily to support Danny and the group of homeowners up the street that are doing this work. I'm very excited to see the receptiveness in your, in in the tone and mood of cutting down trees. My husband and I did it about eight years ago. It was an extremely difficult process through the planning department. My husband had to come in and do a special presentation after we were denied. And we finally got the permit to do it. But as everyone said, you know, it cost us, outside of the permits, it costs us $30,000 to cut down 24 trees on our properties. So in short, I'm appreciative of the tone and the mood and what the direction is going, especially with all of the climate change and the wildfire concerns. I also wanted to add that a group of us, and Danny's aware of this too, headed by Graham, Graham Wood, we've been working together closely for the last several weeks. And we're all going to be on the, is it the MCC meeting tonight at seven o'clock? We have received over, I I personally went and got 70 signatures on a petition to to help get a better fuel break in Quarry Park. So I guess my point is, we're all very, very concerned, especially with what happened last fall. And I'm appreciative of your consideration of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I will next call on a phone number ending with zero seven three. Please accept this invitation. I mute your mic and begin speaking, please. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Chris Lockwood. I live at 487 El Granada Boulevard, three doors down from Danny. And I just have a couple of quick questions here. Which 31 trees, proposed trees are to be cut? Because I don't see any markings on any of the trees. And I'm just wondering which trees are to be cut, that's one question. And then there are owls that vacate the area. They live in some of the trees and they're, they periodically come, come back and forth. And I don't know where else they go. But I'm worried that the the owls might be affected in this tree, tree cutting. That's my other question. And there are two scenic trees that I think should not be removed. They're, they're beautiful, they're probably 120 feet tall. And they're, they're, they're quite, they're very beautiful trees. And I believe something of that, those, that age should be respected and not cut down in 30, 30 minutes. So those are, those are just my, that's my two cents. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for your comment. I will next call on Annette Merriman, followed by Calco. Annette, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking, please.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm really excited to see Danny and the rest of our neighbors undergoing this process. And I'm very happy to hear how supportive you have all been. I'm a neighbor, I'm directly next to one of the participants in this, in the request. I live at 523 El Granada Boulevard. Both my husband and I have been terrified, given the fires of the last few years. And of course, looking at the similarity between our neighborhood and the Paradise Fire, I'd like to say we're not just super excited and supportive, but we wish we would have had the time and energy to participate with Danny. And just some circumstances made it a little bit too difficult for us to join him in the permit request. I'd also like to add that it would be great if we can remove the trees within 100 feet of our homes. But as many of you have asked, what about beyond the 100 feet? We have those lots that are owned by other individuals that are on the paper straight. They're difficult, they're steep, and they are filled with eucalyptus trees. We would love to see if we could work out some way that we could easily, quickly remove those trees as well. Secondly, I'd like to say the density and the, and the filth of the trees that have been growing in Quarry Park in the GG NRA are also a significant concern of ours. I walk there often. And I think that will be brought up today, this evening at the MCC. I'd like to see if we could get those thinned or removed or finally complete the fire break that was supposed to be completed years ago. I absolutely agree with removing the Cape Ivey or treating it with something to ensure it does not grow and and even cover more of the ground. It is everywhere and it is horrific. And then I'd like to just say, I too am joined with Greg and Kathy in this overall effort to make El Granada Boulevard more safe. And I'd like to support any efforts of the future to make sure we don't end up like Paradise. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And lastly, I will call on Calco. Please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking, please. Go ahead. Can you hear us? No response. Let's try one more time. Yeah, I don't see, I think this audio might not be working, Chair Ketchum.
Okay. Or there is another hand raised, so maybe go to them and then just back and see, okay.
Yeah, hold on just one second. This is for Fran Pollard. Fran, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking, please.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you for, for having this meeting. Good morning, commissioners. I think it's really urgent. This is a time to do some prevention. The county needs to cut as many trees as possible within the 200, 300 feet of all property, not just El Granada Boulevard, but even the lower properties and and the boulevards. Anything that's close to people's homes or this whole town is going to blow up. We, this entire community is surrounded by trees. We can't wait any longer. I think something has to be done this spring. I just heard on the news this morning, the federal government is giving hundreds of millions or billions of dollars to the states to help with prevention. And Governor Newsom just said that he's going to make that money available to the states and, I mean, the counties to do prevention of fire. And and that needs to be done this spring before the hot, dry summer. And I've got to tell you, I live next to Quarry Park and it is very, very dry this year. We hardly got any rain this year. I've never seen it so dry. And I've been here 50 years. This is my 50th, five-oh year here. And it's getting terrible. And we need to do prevention, the county needs to do, spend that money. I know it's urgent. I know it takes forever for for government to do anything, but this is urgent. We're in an emergency situation now. And I think that this needs to be done this spring before the fire, hot, dry, windy fire season comes again. And I'm wondering, are you expecting, I would like somebody to answer this question. Are you expecting the homeowners to pay for all this? I guess on their own property, but maybe you need to subsidize some of it. And I'm glad that you are streamlining the permits process. So that's, that's good. Yeah, there shouldn't be any cost to to remove eucalyptus. And I'm not even sure you need to plant trees right away because it's so dry. We're out of water. We may have to ration again. And I've been rationing for years now. So I don't know how much more we can ration. So, so, you know, there's no water there to, to, to take care of these trees if they are planted. So what else? Let's see. Again, I think you need to cut the trees within 200 to 300 feet of all these, all the homes, even the lower areas and in the boulevards also. If, if, maybe if we have to chip in something, but you can subsidize. If you get all that money to help with prevention, it should be spent now. El Granada is the most, one of them, I I hear there's maybe one more community that might be as densely populated as El Granada. I think they're oaks. But otherwise, we're, we're the most densely populated community in the unincorporated area. And you need to help us with that, with with this prevention. I'm, I can't believe the county takes on so much of the property, this course, county parks. And then they, they don't really properly take care of it. There's not the manpower, there's not, not any of this happening that we know of. So please, planning commissioners, I hope you get on top of even the park commission and and the county to help us financially and physically doing this. Must be done again this spring. We can't wait another year. As I said, this is the driest year ever. Oh, again, are you, well, no, I won't go over that again. Shouldn't be placed here. All right, I think, I think I got most of the points. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. And I will go back to Calco one more time. Calco, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking. Can you hear us? Sorry, no response.
Chair Ketchum, if that concludes the public comment, I'd like to go back, you know, I suggested we go to public comment. And I don't think we asked the applicant if they had a prepared presentation that they wanted to make. So I just wanted to make sure the applicant got a fair opportunity to present anything they wanted to present.
Thank you. I think we've had it all covered and all the questions and same pseudo complaints and outright complaints that we have have been dealt with by everybody else asking the questions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will, if there are no objections, I will close the public comment portion of the, of this item. And oh, does staff have any responses to the issues raised?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ketchum. And thanks to all the participants. So first, regarding the removal of fees, staff doesn't have any objection to that concept. The fees are set by action of the Board of Supervisors. And typically, when the board contemplates fee waivers, we ask that it be accompanied by some sort of offset to the cost of the department for doing the business. Because, you know, Camille's time is valuable and we need to make sure we cover our costs of doing the business. But that would be a decision that could be made by the board. Excuse me. In terms of the tree regulation updates, it has been a long time. It's been an important process that staff has devoted a lot of resources to at certain periods. But we haven't been able to bring it over the finish line. I think Ms. Young is accurate in stating that a lot of work went into addressing the issues associated with the protection of the heritage and significant trees, particularly the oaks here on the Bayside in communities like Mellow Oaks. And for that reason, the draft set of regulations is, you know, very protective towards trees and rightly so for particular areas. But it became clear to staff that we also needed to address the other side of the coin, which is the need to remove invasives and to make that process as easy as possible. And so that's where the focus of our efforts have been most recently. And I just met with the county arborist and the county team that's going to be leading the effort to complete this. And we understand the urgency of it. And we will be doing our best to get it in front of the, first, the community councils and advisory boards and then the planning commission. So we will be moving that forward as quickly as possible. And we've got a strategy for doing so. I expect that, you know, we should be able to have it in front of the planning commission before the conclusion of the calendar year. So with regard to the replanting requirement, I certainly understand the reluctance to planting additional trees. I would have no objection if the commission thinks the conditions should be revised to eliminate the tree planting requirement. I think that, you know, the challenge of addressing the problem of invasives and getting a quality, long-term replanting plan is one that we need to address cooperatively with the property owners. And I I think that their investment and commitment to doing this right speaks along a lot about, I think, their, what I believe their intent to do is properly manage their property over the long term. And so I think, you know, the RCD has been great in providing guidance to the property owners and how to do this well. I hope they'll continue to work together. And, you know, with that collaborative effort, I I don't think we need to write elaborate conditions. So with regard to the coastal development permit requirement, there is a question about, you know, how can we get rid of that? And so there's a couple of strategies. Number one, I mentioned, I am in constant discussion with the commission staff on what they consider to be significant vegetation. If we can get the staff and the commission to concur that some of these species do not qualify as significant vegetation, the removal will no longer be considered development and the coastal permit requirement would be eliminated. So but we haven't made a lot of progress in that regard. And I'm not convinced that they will ever come to that conclusion. And I think that the staff analysis and some of the issues that we've run into with regard to this project demonstrates why there is some value to some permitting process. So the other strategy is the Public Works Plan strategy. This is a way in which a public agency can get permission to implement tree removal at a large scale. It's a public works plan. It's a public works plan is like a miniature local coastal program for a special district, right? And once that district gets the public works plan certified by the commission, they don't need to pull permits. They need to notify the commission and the county of what they intend to do. And it needs to be within the parameters of the certified public works plan. But that would be another way of eliminating coastal permit requirements. So and we remain open to all those options, and we will continue to pursue them. With regard to view impacts, why are we concerned about removal of trees as it relates to visual resources? Well, we heard from one commenter today who appreciates the scenic value of some of these trees. And I I think it's more than just the value scenic value of the existing tree. It's about the long-term health of the landscape. Right? These are beautiful coastal open space areas, and we want them to remain so. And so if you were to clear cut eucalyptus, you would have potential problems related to erosion, to invasive species. And so the issue about view impacts is more about long-term management of the land and how to best do that. And it's similar to species protection. I mean, it's, I would agree. You know, within these eucalyptus forests, there's not a lot of valuable habitat. But if there are species of concern present, I believe we should do what we can to minimize our you know, the impacts to them. And so I don't think that needs to necessarily occur on a case-by-case basis to make, you know, the permitting process more difficult. I think that, you know, we've developed a menu of best management practices for these types of activities. And as long as it's built in to the proposals, then we can, you know, do the job of minimizing impacts to the species that are of concern without placing, you know, too much regulatory burden on the property owners. And I'm fully in favor of incentives and outreach to get other property owners to do that. And, you know, we look to everybody's assistance in that regard. At the Planning and Building Department, you know, our primary job is to respond to development applications. Actually, you know, or in updating our plans and regulations. Actually, taking the proactive initiative to get these projects done is going to require a broad coalition that goes well beyond the Planning and Building Department. But we are ready and willing member of that team. And so, yeah, thanks again to the applicants and everyone who's helped them along the way. And that concludes my comments, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Steve. So to the commission now, I I just wanted to among your thoughts to get your take on whether the tree replacement should be required with this particular project or not. And also an approach for the other invasive species, particularly Cape Ivy. Shall we start with Commissioner Gupta?
From what I'm hearing, I'm I'm not an expert in that area at all. But from what I hear and what I understand, and and I'm kind of raising a question. Can the planting be done, replacement planting be done later on? If needed, if we don't go with it now.
I would say that the planting season actually is in the fall. That's the best time to plant because you have the winter rains. So perhaps that would be one idea to defer this to the fall, or I don't know, but.
Right. And and I'm not familiar with these native trees that we are talking about, replacing them with that. So I would leave it up to the experts on deciding that. And what was the second thing? Commissioner Ketchum, you were.
Oh, the the invasions, my concern, I guess, is, and I I agree with Steve when he said perhaps the the approach with the property owners would be education and encouragement. And and I think education is key. I think if people were aware of the damage and how to identify the invasives, they would be protective of their property. Particularly that in this case here, whether effort could, how to make, how to address the need to avoid getting Cape Ivy through the chipper. Before the chipping happens, I not, I don't know if you've been there, how extensive it is, but just I mean, maybe it's enough for RCD to, since they're monitoring the process, maybe they could assess whether, you know, that could be pulled off ahead of time, so it's not put through the chipper. I don't know.
Right. That actually raises a concern in my mind, not knowing enough about it, is if we leave all these chips on the ground, are they also flammable?
Well, I think, I think that the something is needed to control erosion after the cutting. And so the chip serves that purpose plus the safe hauling, all that, you know, so. And I don't know as far as hazard. Chief, Fire Chief.
I actually, sorry, excuse me. I did actually address that question with Rich Sampson, who didn't have an issue with and actually recommended that the the best way to handle the debris after the tree removal is to chip it and leave the.
Leave it, leave it. I would go with that. So, okay, so that was aside, but
If I may, I think perhaps what's being suggested would be an additional condition that required to the degree feasible that any invasives be removed within the cutting area prior to the cutting and shipping operation being implemented. I I don't know if that's what was planned in the operation or if that would be problematic for the applicant.
Does anybody know off the top of their head if spraying of an herbicide a week or two prior to the job would effectively, if directly applied to Cape Ivy, would would accomplish this?
I don't know for sure because it takes some time for the plant to die. It might take, I mean, basically, the Coma Creek report spoke talked about going, ideally, they would go in and treat, then treat again a few weeks later. So, you know, you probably might not want to delay that long. I think that because, you know, basically you're waiting for the plant to die, whereas if you if you go in and just remove the Cape Ivy, which is smells nice and it's easy to remove the surface, just that it grows back and just bag it up and get it out of the way. So then when you come in to cut the trees, you're not putting that through the chipper. I would say that I would defer to the RCD folks as to the best way to accomplish this, that I'm sure they understand it. And as far as the comment to put, to get rid of all the weed, I don't think it's a problem. Most weeds, running them through the chipper. It's just the Cape Ivy is this one plant that vegetatively reproduces. Every segment of the plant can grow a new plant, even if it's all bruised up.
And do we already have these capines on the property? Okay. So I'll go with the experts, really, that's.
Okay, so next, let's go to Commissioner Hanson.
Lisa, I support everything you have suggested. In terms of the trees, those hills were treeless for thousands of years. And, you know, getting back to nature would be far easier doing what was there than trying to terraform it so we look like Italy. I'm not interested in that. If we want to plant trees, I think we need to go to the local native list to encourage the behavior and plants and animals and things we want. So my preference is, you know, trees are optional. If you want to plant trees, go to the B list of that is recommended. And my least favored is putting in non-native species. So we have a Mediterranean look. Chipping, yeah, that keeps moisture in the soil, does prevent a lot of other damages. That's fine. Cape Ivy is a huge problem, and you also got pampas grass there. You know, that's another huge problem. What do we can do to make sure that they don't propagate? Chipping is good for pampas grass and keeping that from happening. Cape Ivy will be problematic, but I support everything you brought up here.
Okay, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, thank you. And let me tell you right off that, yes, I also support what you have said, Commissioner Ketchum. I I do would like to have, still have, you know, some trees there. I think in the long run, they all, they will also continue to help with the erosion in the area. But I definitely would encourage that they are native native trees to be replanted. And in the more broader scope of what we've been talking about here, I would like to see, and I don't know if this is, you know, I guess goes to the board of supervisors, to come up with a plan to actually start addressing this this problem of the eucalyptus trees and create a real program to address and get rid of, you know, this problematic weed that we have that creates many problems for the environment. And definitely, especially now that we're into this fire danger that, you know, we we, it's just getting worse and worse. And so removing, you know, this danger, I think it's, it should be to the jump to the top of the list of things that the county should do. I wish that the Sumatera Fire Department would have been at this meeting to kind of put their two cents about, you know, what they think about, you know, creating some reduction of this. And and however, the the planning commission can support on this, we should be on board to address this thing and move it forward, you know. And in past meetings that we've had about trees, I've always been a proponent of having a master plan to remove eucalyptus, eucalyptus trees because they are the danger that they are. So that's what I have to say at this at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Santa Cruz.
You know, I think prevention of wildfire doesn't mean cutting all the trees, whatever we feel there is a danger. Like in Paradise, where lack of management, whoever is responsible to manage this tree cutting and trimming and cleaning all the leaves and things that created the fire hazard is a problem. Not too much cutting all the trees, trying to avoid fire. The the first thing that comes to our mind is cutting any kind of tree that comes on in in our way. I I don't support the fact that they don't want to replant it. Somebody suggested not to replant after the trees been cut it because of lack of water or dry season. That's incredible unfair justification and not to replanting anything. You know, I I agree with Commissioner Hanson, then, you know, maybe we don't want to look so Mediterranean. But just to plant some kind of tree that are related to the area, that would be more likely. But not to replanting, it's a, it's unbelievable even to hear that as an option.
Okay, I just wanted to, a couple of things. If we make replanting optional, I mean, basically, there's nothing to prevent these landowners from planting new trees. And I would and I would also point out that this isn't your typical suburban neighborhood where any kind of exotic tree wouldn't look out of place, particularly in this, basically in this particular block, the backyards, but this R1 area, a large R1 area with paper streets, which may never be developed. We don't know. And it's wildland, and the natural state of these hills was chapparal. And I think until the county has a plan of what kind of habitat should be restored there and a list of trees that are appropriate, that we shouldn't require any planting. This is my take on it. Not now, it would set a precedent of the four trees that were by the, suggested by the arborist when pressed. The one native, the ironwood tree, I've I've planted a bunch of those over here at Pillar Ridge, and they do great. I love that tree. And I think that would be, that would be a good one, but I don't think we should require everybody to plant an ironwood tree, you know, until we have a selection of trees and decide what what we're going for. So my inclination would be to drop the replacement tree requirement for this project. And and I, what I would like to see is regarding invases, I would like to focus in on, all right, already the the conditions include maintenance of the control of the eucalyptus. And I would like to add to that, if we can, gibode grass and Cape Ivy, just those two. Now, the gibode grass is already in the LCP to be controlled. And so really only adding Cape Ivy and whether whether that, whether there's agreement and whether staff would would approve of just adding that into the sentence and the conditions along with the eucalyptus, those two other plants, I don't know. But if not, then to encourage it.
I'd like to address the last comment by Commissioner Santa Cruz as well. I may have sounded hyperbolic in talking about cutting all of the eucalyptus trees. We are, we're taking away all of the eucalyptus trees. However, on each of our properties, we've marked off protected pine trees and redwood trees. Many of them planted by us already, and we're all inclined to put a few trees further away from the houses, regardless of the requirements.
Thank you.
And staff is in support of the change you mentioned, Chair Ketchum.
Regarding Cape Ivy and gibode grass? Does this, does that wording need to be put into the motion? How do, how do we deal with them if there's agreement on?
I I think I I can state that staff is revising its recommendation to include both the Cape Ivy and the gibode grass as in with eucalyptus when we talk about controlling invasives in that condition. And so I think with this revised staff recommendation, the motion can be to support the staff recommendation as updated.
And what about the replanting, dropping that requirement?
Yes, as well. The, I think we will remove the trees, the requirement to replace three trees that will be at the option of the property owners. And I think what we, with regard to the species, I would suggest that it be, the species be from the native list, that the attachment be that you've referenced in your discussions. But that it also be considered fire safe. What counts as fire safe, I I'm not the expert. I too am a big fan of the ironwood. I've got one, and I think it's beautiful. But I think the property owner should have some choice. And as long as it's native and fire safe, I I I think giving them the flexibility would be appropriate if they want to plant trees.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to make sure Camille is getting what she needs to update the conditions accordingly. So.
To be clear, it sounds like the commission's going to remove condition number seven, which requires replacement and just leave it as an option. And typically, any homeowner can plant any kind of tree that they want. Maybe we can leave it in to encourage replacement with fire safe natives.
Yes, that's, that's what I would suggest is that rather than just eliminate it, we replace it with a condition that identifies. That uh identifies that replacement trees are optional. Um, and if um trees will be planted, they shall be native drought resistant and fire safe.
Okay, and then it sounds like the commission wants to revise condition number nine. To not only include control of blue gum seedlings, but also Cape Ivy. Maybe pampas grass and gibode grass.
You can just say gibode grass, that was the list, it was on the list of species that are there.
Okay.
And so, yeah, staff will update our recommendation along those lines. So that is the recommendation before the commission.
Okay, any further discussion among the commission? Anyone?
No.
May I have a motion?
I will move that we, oh, I need to read that, right? So.
Your screen.
Planning.
I was asking Camille to share the screen with the recommendation, but it sounds like you found it.
Yes, I did find it.
Okay.
I have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
So the planning commission. Um, proposes to approve the coastal development permit. For county file number PLN twenty twenty dash zero zero three six nine. By making the required findings and adopting the conditions as updated. The conditions of approval listed on attachment A of the staff report. Is that good enough? Yeah, okay.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Commissioner Gupta?
I.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I.
Here, Ketchum.
I. Motion passes four to one with Senator Santa Cruz opposed. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for this uh whole discussion. And moving on now to the director's portion of the meeting.
Yes, uh, thank you to everybody who participated today and uh thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Um, so I don't have any additional correspondence to report to you today. Um, with regard to our next meeting, um, I do have an informational item that I would. Uh, I look forward to presenting to you, or that is that I look forward to the Office of Sustainability presenting to you. Um, it is regarding the Santa Cruz, the San Mateo County Active Transportation Plan. So that plan's already been adopted by the Board of Supervisors. But um, when it came up at uh one of our earlier planning commission meetings, there seemed to be interest in learning more about it. So uh I look forward to that presentation. The other item we have on the agenda is an appeal of um the department's decision. To approve a significant tree removal permit in Menlo Oaks. So, um, there you have it, the other side of the coin. So let's see, um, in terms of the director's report. Um, I am excited to announce that we have um appointed a replacement to Joe Leclerc as planning manager. Um, Melissa Ross, one of our senior planners, has been promoted to the department's planning manager. So uh very excited to have her in that position. Um, I'll be meeting with her and uh our deputy Lisa later this week. To talk about priorities and timelines for uh the long range planning work plan. That was presented to you at the last meeting, which is quite an ambitious plan. And I think, um, you know, it's going to take some work for us to hone in on the highest priorities. And to uh make sure that Melissa and her team will be effective, will be able to effectively carry out those plans. So uh more to come on that, but congratulations to Melissa, I'm sure you'll all enjoy working with her. Um, but other than that, I do not have um much else to update the commissioners on. So I'll conclude my um report there and be available for questions.
Are there any commissioner questions for Steve?
Hey, Steve, um, a question, since uh by June fifteen, the state is expecting to uh go back to normal. Regarding the pandemia and and going back to normal with restaurants and everything, are we planning to go back to regular meetings? Or are we continuing on the Zooming thing?
Um, at this point, we have not made any firm decisions in that regard. And I would assume that we will continue with the Zoom meetings. I know there's a lot of discussion going on about, you know, trying to return to the old ways of doing business. But there have been no firm decisions made in that regard yet. So um, I'll do my best to keep the commissioners posted as I learn.
Okay, and so then the regular business then in from your department, is that going to be continue online? Like uh like we do so far, or um, uh, at what point you are planning to open like a regular uh business? If you know anything about that.
Yes, um, we don't have any scheduled reopening dates. Um, right now, our business is entirely online. Um, I think the um gradual shift to an opening will occur. Um, when everyone who wants a vaccination has been able to get a vaccination. Um, and you know, what, what point in time that will be is very hard to judge. Um, and I'm certainly not the decision maker on this. This is, I think, a larger countywide issue that needs to be, you know, negotiated with the employees and the unions. So, um, you know, I I'll just have to keep you posted. I'm, you know, learning as we go, just like everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad we're in the county of San Mateo, where the county will have the highest percentage of vaccinated. Uh, habit and and then, you know, we are above fifty percent, which higher than the whole state. Which I think will reflect in the way we're doing, we're going to do business in the future, you're right, thank you, Steve.
I had one question. Um, have we ever thought of including kind of a video in our. Uh, staff presentations, like for example, in today's um project. It would be kind of nice to see a video of what the trees, the density of trees. And of that area looks like, will give a, give us a better idea rather than having to make a visit to that.
Yeah, um, you know, it, I think there's nothing preventing us, I think it's a great idea. It just requires some technical capacities that might not be currently our strong suit. In fact, I would love it if somebody on my staff was adept at flying a drone and could fly through the forest and capture it on video. And we could embed it in our presentation, that would be fabulous. And I've seen um folks who are technically adept with Google Maps. Make some really cool uh presentations where you can fly into a certain area and then fly out and go to a different location. Technology is available, um, it's just a matter of, you know, the planners who are making the presentation. Being able to use it effectively and typically, that, you know, they're uh so wrapped up in getting their. Uh, the permits and reports out, then they're on to the next one, they don't have a lot of time to fool around with drones or. I I appreciate the comment and I think there's opportunity to do that.
Yeah, if it can be done, it's San Mateo County, that's the way I look at it.
There.
Uh, we had a young uh project planner who presented some, I think. Drone uh pictures.
Oh, yeah, I think that must have been.
You remember?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hanson, you remember?
Yeah, so, okay, thank you, thanks, yeah, yeah. We need to think outside the box.
Anybody else? More comments? There are no objections, we are now adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, have a good rest of the week.
See you next time.
Bye.
Bye.